All right. Thank you for attending. With 151 registered voters for the town of Abington in the auditorium, I'd like to call this special town meeting of May 20th, 2019, to order. Without hearing any objection, I will waive the reading of the warrant and the constable's return. For the record, however, the Abington Selectmen have called the special town meeting and the annual town meeting which will follow. They've issued their warrants. Warrants have been posted and notices have been delivered pursuant to our town bylaws, with the special town meeting to start no earlier than 7:00 PM and the annual town meeting to start at or after 7:30 PM. At this time, I'd like to welcome up our planning board chairman, longtime resident, Mr. Wayne Smith, who is going to lead us in the honor of our pledge of allegiance. Wayne, if you could come on right up to the stage. Please. You could all please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They say it takes a village, but every village needs a few special residents who lead by example, who give and never ask for anything in return, and who earn the respect and admiration of fellow residents. Small towns like Abington rely heavily on volunteers and the good nature of people. We struck gold with Wayne P. Smith. Wayne has led a life of dedication and service to others, whether he is selling hot dogs at Strawberry Shortcake with the Lions Club, which he's been a member of 50 years now, or running a very successful local businesses, or jogging hundreds of miles through the streets of Massachusetts to raise funds for people with vision problems, or serving on several civic and governmental committees through the years, including the Old Colony YMCA, which he's on the Board of Directors, Colonial Road Runners, he serves on that too. Wayne's generosity to his community and his integrity among his peers are examples of what we should all strive to be. It goes without saying that he is a much-loved and much-admired pillar of our community. We wanted to take a moment this evening to especially note Wayne Smith's dedication of his work and ethics on the Abington Planning Board. Wayne was elected to the Planning Board for the first time in March of 1974, and Abington residents have faithfully continued to reelect him ever since. This year will be Wayne's 45th year serving on our Planning Board, and he's not done yet. Think about that. Wayne has volunteered more than half of his adult life to the town of Abington. Wayne, we thank you for all that you have done for our town and its residents. On behalf of the entire town, please join me in a round of applause in thanking Wayne P. Smith.
I really appreciate it. I wondered why they had me salute the flag, but I guess the answer to that is if you say yes all the time, you get to do a lot of things. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Tom Connolly, who will dedicate our annual report and provide a list of our deceased town employees for a moment of silence. Tom?
Thank you, Sean. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen in the town of Abington, it is my honor to announce that the 2018 Annual Report for the town of Abington has been dedicated to a group of people who devoted themselves to our community in a variety of ways. They each passed away this past year, but their legacy has left Abington a better place. They taught, coached, worked for the town, or served on various boards and committees. They were admired as the ultimate examples of enthusiasm and spirit, generosity and care for the well-being of others, and a true love for our small town and its families. Collectively, they enriched our town of Abington and helped to foster a true hometown community. We dedicate this year's town report to Gordon W. Bates, Richard Cracker Dunnevin, Thomas J. Graham, Curtis Reed, Rosemary Christine Walls. Their contributions will forever be appreciated by all of us who call Abington home. Thank you. We would also like to pause and remember some of our town employees and dedicated public servants who passed away last year. Please join me in remembering the following residents by standing in a shared moment of silence after I read the names, please. Gordon W. Bates, Paul Chase, Patricia Daly, Richard O. Dunnevin, Thomas J. Graham, Ruth S. Hussey, Acting Sergeant Alex Kokoros, Virginia Ginny Lynn, Grace Avery Mackewitz, Karen A. Moore, Harold N. Norton, Ann Perskinis, Jackie Reynus, Curtis Reed, Mary E. Rourke, Stanley H. Shura, Rosemary Christine Walls, and Helen Ware. If you'd all stand in a moment of silence, please. Thank you all very much.
Welcome to this annual, the special town meeting and the annual town meeting in the fall of May 20th, 2019. My name is Sean Riley, and I'm the town moderator. It's my responsibility to preside over and regulate the discussion of tonight's articles, which appear in the special town meeting warrant and the annual town meeting warrant documents, which are made available to all residents prior to tonight's meeting. The warrants are prepared by and approved by the Board of Selectmen. As you enter tonight's meeting, you should have picked up a copy of the special town meeting warrant, the annual town meeting warrant, and a separate sheet which was the copy of the complete motion under Article 1, which will be our budget article. We will use and follow these documents throughout tonight's meeting. We'll be using some of the technology available in this beautiful auditorium, and I'll try to display each article as we address them. However, please note that the printed warrant is the official warrant and contains the articles, so if there are any discrepancies between the content of your warrant and that which appears on the screen, the language in the warrant or in the stated motions will always control unless otherwise stated. I've also been asked to inform you that in case of a need to evacuate the auditorium, there are exit doors available on both sides, in the far back, in the sides where you came in, on the left and the right, and on both sides of the stage also. New England Town Meeting has been described by some as the purest form of democracy in America, and we greatly appreciate all of you who are in attendance tonight to take care of the town's business. Tonight, we'll do our best to move the meeting along while providing reasonable time to allow for open debate and to answer your questions. We have a very brief special town meeting tonight, which will then be followed by the annual meeting. The special town meeting warrant contains 12 articles, so that meeting should be very short. The annual town meeting contains 26 articles, including the proposed operating budget for the town of Abington for all services which will become effective as of July 1st, 2019, and upon your vote of approval tonight. Please allow me to introduce our town clerk, Lee Ann Adams; town council, Greg Corbell of KP Law. Mrs. Adams will be serving as the clerk of the town meeting, will be recording the wording of any motions and the results of any votes taken by you, the resident voters. Attorney Corbell will be available to answer any legal questions which may arise, and together with the town clerk, they will try to help the moderator make sure that we run this meeting in accordance with proper procedure and as smoothly as possible. Seated to my left are the members of the Abington Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is comprised of residents of Abington who volunteer to review and analyze each article which is to be voted on at each town meeting. At the start of our annual town meeting, I'll ask the chairman of the Finance Committee to introduce each member, and he and Tammy Anna Rick LaFond will also be invited to make any introductory comments they'd like to make to summarize our budget issues this evening. For the rules of the meeting, as always, we ask that you please abide by these rules and guidelines during our town meeting to allow you the opportunity to ask questions, share your opinions, or simply listen to the debate. Number one, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and the moderator will recognize you at the earliest available moment and ask you to stand and speak. However, please use one of the two microphones at the bottom of the aisles, and please give your name and address before you begin speaking so that the town clerk can properly record the minutes of this meeting. You can either raise your hand, or you can get in line at the microphones. Second, please be sure to keep all comments and questions relevant to the subject matter and the article that's being discussed. Do not make any personal attacks or bring personalities into debating of an issue. If the moderator believes that a speaker is straying from the issues, I'll have to direct the speaker to limit that portion of the debate to the issue. We also ask that all speakers limit their time at the microphone so that others will have an opportunity to speak and be heard. A motion to move the question will be taken up as any other motion from the floor. For those of you who are new to town meeting, a motion to move the question is a request to end all the debate and to move directly to a vote on the article. To move the question, a person must be recognized by the moderator, and the motion to move the question must then be immediately mentioned. You cannot take the microphone, recite your opinion on the article, and then try to shut off everyone else's debate by moving the question at the conclusion of your comments. Please also understand that the moderator has a right to rule that the motion to move the question is out of order if I believe the motion is unfairly or prematurely limiting the voter's rights to hear questions or answers to questions or to better understand an article or an amendment. Only registered voters of Abington may vote here at town meeting. Any non-resident or non-registered voter is required to sit in the upper section of the auditorium. If you're in the upper section and you're a voter, you need to come down and sit in the lower section if you'd like your vote to be counted. Department heads and members of the press are allowed to sit in the rows right in front of me. Any person who's not a resident of Abington but wishes to address the town meeting must first be recognized by the moderator and have the approval of a majority vote of the members of the town meeting before speakers, sorry, before speaking. However, in accordance with our Town Charters, Action 2-9, non-resident department heads and superintendents who work for our town will be allowed to speak or answer questions if requested, and they may also sit and consult with their relevant committee or board. Town meeting will strive to adjourn at a reasonable hour. If for any reason we do not finish our review and voting on all the articles tonight, we'll have to continue this meeting on this Thursday night, May 23rd. We will do our best to finish the work this evening. I need to appoint three counters in case we have to have any standing votes. I've already spoken to and I'm going to appoint Mr. Henry DeCarlo if we have a standing to vote. Henry, you're going to count just the people in that section where you're sitting. Mr. Aaron Christensen, you're going to count the people in the middle section where Aaron is sitting, and Mr. Mike Noonan will count all the people in the section you're sitting, plus the members of the Finance Committee. I also need to nominate and appoint a deputy moderator for the coming year. So for our first vote, I'd like you to approve the appointment of former moderator, former deputized moderator, Bob Kelly, as our deputy moderator again this year. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Kelly as our deputy moderator, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Understanding that many of you may have babysitters at home here tonight, we ask that you please turn your cellphone ringers down or turn them off, and please take any telephone conversations out to the lobby so as not to disturb anyone around you at town meeting. Please understand that in order to debate or discuss an item at tonight's town meeting, the subject matter must be listed in the warrant in the form of an article. Tonight, the Finance Committee and others will be presenting their motions to either approve an article as it's originally printed, or to propose amended wording for your approval with updated information, or to oppose an article, which we call passing over an article. If you have any questions about procedure or how to do something, please feel free to ask me. We'll do our best to make sure that we all understand what we're voting on before I actually ask you to declare your vote. Sorry, I have to go through that, but now it's done. If there's not anything outstanding, I'd like to proceed with Article 1 of our special town meeting. So if you turn to the warrant in the special town meeting, Article 1 will be to see if the vote, the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of money to pay the following unpaid bills from prior fiscal years. The only bill that's outstanding is a $5,000 bill to pay FY 2017 and 2018 Abington firefighters' local 2080 for contractual health and welfare benefits. Mr. Sala, Matt Sala is the chairman of our Finance Committee. He will make the motions on most every article.
Matt Sala, 25, George Gillespie Way. Matt Sala, 25, George Gillespie Way. The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 1 and to transfer the sum of $5,000 from the fiscal year 19 fire expense line item.
So the Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 1 and to transfer the sum of $5,000 from FY 19 fire expense line item. This requires a nine-tenths vote. If we don't get a unanimous vote to approve this bill, I have to ask you, I'll stand, and we're going to count you one by one. All those in favor, or anything to be heard on the motion? Yes, sir. You want it transferred from the fire salary item? It's printed as expense. Are we leaving that expense? We're going to leave the motion as it is. We're going to, $5,000 from the fire expense line item. Hearing nothing else, all those in favor of approving Article 1 in the motion made by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Thank you. Article 2 is to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds 62134.86 for the purpose of post-employment benefits upon employee retirements. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 2 and to transfer $32,000 from the fiscal year 19 unemployment account to the Selectmen's buyback salary account, and to transfer $30,134.86 from water retained earnings to the Water Department buyback salary account.
Is there anything to be heard on the motion? Just for those of you who are new, for special town meeting, typically a lot of these articles are kind of housekeeping articles, paying off bills, moving money to pay some of the line items. So Mr. Sala will be making motions routinely to identify where funds are coming to pay certain expenses. If there's nothing to be heard on Article 2, all those in favor of approving the motion on Article 2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 3 is to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds $45,000 for the continued monitoring of the Abington landfill. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 3 and to transfer $45,000 from the fiscal year 19 liability insurance account to the landfill account.
Is there anything to be heard in the Finance Committee's motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article 4, see if the town will transfer from available sums of money, available funds, the sum of money to fund and implement the cost items of collective bargaining agreement between the town of Abington and the International Brotherhood of Police Officers, Local 393, for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022, by the town manager, Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 4 and to implement the cost items for the first year of the collective bargaining agreement with the Abington International Brotherhood of Police Officers by transferring the sum of $115,000 from the balance remaining in the health insurance account, as appropriated by Article 1 of the May 21st, 2018 annual town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Is there anything to be heard on this article? If not...
Just a quick point is that the police collective bargaining agreement was just ratified for starting with the current fiscal year and the next two years. That's why we're going back to last year's budget to put this money in.
Thank you, sir. If there's nothing to be heard, all those in favor of the motion on Article 4, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from certified free cash to cover the FY 2019 snow and ice deficit or take any other action relative there to. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 5 and to transfer the sum of $341,355 from free cash to the FY 19 snow and ice deficit.
Is there anything to be heard on the Finance Committee's motion? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article 6, see if the town will vote to rescind the acceptance of the provisions of Master General Law's Chapter 4453-F and 1/2 with regard to the ambulance enterprise fund and to cease operating the ambulance as an enterprise fund effective July 1, 2019, or take any other action relative there to. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 6 as printed in the warrant. The ambulance enterprise account was recommended to the town by the State Department of Revenue that we move this account into the general fund and pay for the ambulance through the general fund and the fire department.
So just to clarify, we are not shutting down the ambulance service?
Correct. The ambulance service is still running. The fire department will still be running two ambulances. It's just where the money is coming from and how it is being accounted for.
Anything to be heard on Article 6? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 6 as motioned by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Strawberry Valley Golf Course retained earnings total sum of $155,000 for the purchase point of, to purchase a point of sale system for $25,000, a lease agreement for golf carts of $80,000, and equipment purchase of $50,000. Mr. Sala has a motion.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 7 with the following change, by deleting the phrase "lease agreement for golf carts" and inserting "purchase of golf carts."
So the Finance Committee, Mr. Sala, making a motion to approve Article 7, but to instead say "purchase the golf carts" instead of leasing the golf carts. That'll be the motion to approve, the purchase, and all the others described. Is there anything to be heard, any questions on Article 7? Sir?
Rick Collins, 74, Orange Street. I'm just hoping we get a little bit more background on this. Is this going to become an annual line item in terms of capital needs? Is the golf course self-sustaining? If so, what is the annual revenue generated through the course? Love some background on this.
So the reason that we are seeing this article and the next one, Article 8, right now is because the golf course in previous years was, the running of the golf course was contracted out. And when we went to bid for contractors to run the golf course for this time, as the current contractor is retiring, there were no bids for it. So we worked as a town to create a department to run the golf course. The golf course is self-sufficient. It has an enterprise fund. This article and the next are moving the funding from where it currently is in their account to do things like purchase the equipment that was the previous contractors, the golf carts, the point-of-sale stuff, those things. And then the next one is to fund the golf course through the end of this fiscal year, through June 30th. But as mentioned, the golf course is self-funding completely.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Anything else to be heard on this question? If not, all those in favor of the motion by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Strawberry Golf Course retained earnings a sum of $110,000 to fund the operation of the golf course through June 30th, 2019, or take any other action relative there to.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 8 as printed in the warrant.
Anything to be heard on Article 8? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 8, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $40,000 for the purpose of upgrades to Pavilion, Snack Shack, and Bandstand in Island Grove or to take any other action relative there to. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to pass over Article 9. This article was brought forth and after studying, but before getting to town meeting, it was determined that the needs for this were not immediate and that this was eligible for Community Preservation Act funds, and it would be appropriate for that fund to be the source for doing the work on the Pavilion, the Bandstand, the Snack Shack.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Is there anything to be heard on Article 9? Otherwise, you'll be voting with the Finance Committee's motion to pass over Article 9. A yea vote will pass over Article 9. So all those in favor of passing over Article 9, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from certified free cash and other available funds to the stabilization fund or take any other action relative there to. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to transfer the sum of $386,673 from free cash and to transfer the sum of $40,000 from an unexpended HVAC upgrade line item in Article 3 of the May 21st, 2018 annual town meeting to the stabilization fund.
Anything to be heard on Article 10? The stabilization fund is essentially the town's savings account or the rainy day account.
Quick point from...
The question from the back is how much money is in the stabilization right now? What's that? Approximately $1.4 million is in our stabilization right now. This would be, this amount in this article would be added to it. Yes, sir?
Rich Negrally, 340, Diane Circle. The question is HVAC upgrades. What building's getting upgraded?
That was a article from last year's town meeting that we received a grant to do the HVAC upgrade. Was that the town hall? Town Hall and Library. Their systems were upgraded within the past year, but it was paid for from a grant, so the money that the town had voted to spend on that was not needed.
So this is unspent money we're now transferring to the stabilization fund? That portion of it?
A quick point from the Finance Committee. One of our priorities for this particular year was to put as much money as we could into the stabilization fund. The department heads did yeoman's work, helping with their own budgets, but also with their capital requests, to make sure that we were able to kind of squeeze every dollar that we could into the rainy day fund this year. So we wanted to thank them for all the work that they did.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Is there anything else to be heard on Article 10? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion on Article 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from certified free cash to other post-employment benefits trust fund or take any other action relative there to. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to transfer the sum of $80,000 from free cash to the other post-employment's benefits trust fund.
Finance Committee's motion is to transfer $80,000 from free cash to the OPED trust fund. Is there anything to be heard on this article? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion on Article 11, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $40,000 for the town's portion of a dog park project or take any other action relative there to. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to pass over Article 12.
Finance Committee makes a motion to pass over Article 12?
The grant that was received for starting the dog park came in higher than what was originally expected. The dog park committee has committed to getting donations for any funds that do not, that the grant does not meet. So the town taxpayers do not need to pay anymore for the dog park.
The motion is to pass over this article. Moderator recognizes Mr. Michael Franny.
726 Washington Street, Michael Franny and Mr. Bazanson. It bothers me this article because it was, this all started with a few people recognized the fact that it would be very nice if we had a dog park. I visited the dog park down on South Weymouth. It isn't just a fenced-in area. It's a very, very nice area. It's well-maintained, and it's well worth it. At any rate, they raised money and they got a grant from what they call a Stanton Foundation, I believe, and it's well over $100,000. When they went to bid, and if you know anything about municipal bidding laws, it's very difficult to follow them, and they're very good, but you have to abide by them. And you can't expend funds you don't have. At any rate, they have said initially going into this that they were going to do it without taxpayers' money. That's the truth. But the bids went over a little bit. They needed money to get water, I think, and electricity from the building, and this article was originally put in to raise the $40,000, and it was a little bit of an uproar. Just a couple of things. If I were on the Board of Directors from the Stanton Foundation, having given this town a hundred and somewhere $1,000, and you had the people of this town say, "We're not going to give you any taxpayer money," to me, that's really not quite right. But more importantly to me, this is our town, but more importantly to me, it's our community. And I really respect the job that people did in raising these funds. They sat at tables, collected money on different events and different things, and they fell a little bit short. So what I want to do is make a recommendation. I would like to cover their back. I would like to have this money available, $15,000 instead of $40,000. And if they need it, they can spend it. I don't think they're going to need it. And if they don't spend it, it will come back to the town. So I, you know what? There's people here. I can see people shaking their heads, and that's fine. So to speak, I don't have a dog in this race. I really do think, as a matter of principle to me, having been involved all the years that I have been, it's important to me to respect our community members in that sense. I would like to make that as a form of the motion. Alex, I don't know if you have anything?
Alex, before you begin, I'm sorry. Mr. Franny just made a motion to approve it and to fund it with $15,000, which... Someone just said no, right? Oh, no, we haven't made, we haven't voted yet. I'll get back to that motion after Mr. Bazanson speaks. Name and address, Alex.
The Dog Park, 761 Randolph Street, Alex Bazanson. The Dog Park Committee, we actually got more from the Stanton Foundation than we thought. We got $188,000. We raised, I think, about $17,000 or $18,000 at this point with donations. The bids came in at, the contract was awarded at $209,000. Like Mike says, we don't think we're going to need any more money, but Mike approached me to say that it would be good to have a cushion. We've already committed to raising the additional funds that we need to do, and we're well on our way to doing that, but if we get 99% done and hit a problem like you can in any construction project, then we're going to have a problem and not be able to finish it. I honestly don't think we're going to need this, but I think a $15,000 buffer would be a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Bazanson. The motion on, Mr. Franny, if you hold on one second. The motion on the floor, Mr. Sala made a motion to pass over, Mr. Franny made a motion to approve with a different number. In Abington, we always go with the positive motion first, so we'll go to Mr. Franny's motion first. But Mr. Franny's made a motion to approve $15,000 for the dog park. We're in the special town meeting, which is basically spending all the remaining money we had for last year's budget, and we just put all the remaining money we had in last year's budget into the stabilization fund. So, and I, please, if you see me stepping aside and whispering with town council or town manager because we're trying to figure out how to make things work to allow you to vote on what you'd like to support or not. The thought was, the only source of funds that we could offer to you would be, it would have to be $15,000 to be transferred back out of stabilization now to pay for this, if the community would like to approve it. However, state law says to take money out of the stabilization, you need more than a two-thirds vote to approve. So... Did I summarize that correctly? So the motion on the floor for Mr. Franny, if you would agree with this, would be a motion to approve Article twelve and to fund it with $15,000 from the stabilization fund. That would require two-thirds vote to approve. Onto the microphone.
Is it easier to take it out of the OPED account?
His question, was it easier to take it out of the other employment, the post-employment benefits account? Go with the stabilization? Okay, so the motion is... If you don't expend it, we would just...
Yeah, any article that's approved, that we don't expend all the funds, they become available. The unexpended funds become available at next year's town meeting.
So the motion on the floor right now is to approve Article twelve and to fund $15,000 from the stabilization fund. A vote, an aye vote will approve that, a no vote will not approve it. Everyone okay with that? All right. All, yes, sir? Yes. Come right up. Just name and address, please.
My name is Steve Rosetta. I live on 129 Priscilla Alden Road. Listen, I applaud you for your great effort on the dog park and the money, but our town could use better streets and better sidewalks. So if we're going to put $15,000, let's put it into our town for something else. I mean, I just don't agree. Not that I'm a dog hater, I'm a cat lover. But I just think the money should go to something more constructive. You're doing some streets now, and I don't think that, I think they cut corners on what they're doing, and I don't agree with it. I think more money should go into the town for the sidewalks in the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Rosetta. If I could ask everyone to try to speak directly into the microphone, I know it's difficult, especially when I'm up here and the people are behind you, but if you could always try to keep the microphone directly in front of your mouth. Sir? Question from the Finance Committee? Moderator recognizes Ms. Barbara Ray from the Finance Committee.
Barbara Ray, 39 Birch Street. If you come up short, what happens to the Stanton money? The grant? If you come up short, Mike, what happens to the grant money? If you don't get this money...
Stanton Foundation has already given us the money.
So you have that money regardless?
They've given us $188,000 plus $17,000.
For those of you at home, the Stanton Foundation has already paid or provided the town with a $118,000 grant. $188,000, congratulations. $188,000 grant.
Okay, so I'm just asking, you can't lose the grant money for not, okay, thank you.
So the motion is still on the floor. To approve the $15,000 from stabilization requires a two-thirds vote to approve. Nothing else to be heard on this? Yes? If the group does raise the money... They don't have, the question is, what if they don't spend, take the whole $15,000, basically? If they don't need the whole $15,000?
Well, if they just needed a cushion to pay a contractor to get a job done, and then they ask it back, weigh it down.
Yeah, you're going to have to get, you're going to have, I'm going to have to ask you to come to a microphone because we are also taping this on cable. We don't tape it, we don't go live. All right, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the town manager...
To the point of your question, if the funds, once the funds are transferred in, they have to remain for that purpose. If the time comes where those funds are not necessary, then the town accountant will close that account out at the end of the fiscal year, so those funds will revert to the general fund. If the, if the article, money's put into an article, then it's possible, let's say $15,000, at a future town meeting, this body could vote to transfer that for another cause, or you could vote to put it back into stabilization. So there will be options if the funds aren't completely spent.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, Rick LaFond. The moderator recognizes Selectman Kenny Coyle.
Ken Coyle, 222 High Street. Alex is correct. The town has received $188,986. On top of, before that, we received $17,000. But there is one thing important to note that is, in three out of the first five years that the dog, the dog park is open, the town is eligible to receive 5% of the total cost. So they're eligible to receive 5% of 200, almost $200,000 if the park is completed, and that's the upkeep for three out of the first five years. So I would say that if the park is not completed, Stanton Foundation is not going to come up with that additional 15%.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Is there anything else to be heard? Yes, ma'am, name and address, please.
Kate Platty, 45 Baxter Ave. I just have a question about, is there a board for the dog park? Or does this fall under Parker Recreation, which would fall under DPW?
Moderator recognizes Town Manager, Rick LaFond.
Ultimately, this would be the Board of Selectmen. Technically, the Board of Selectmen is the town with regard to accepting grants, and ultimately, it is the board, under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, with further decisions about whether the funds were necessary and what funds aren't necessary for future either maintenance or construction.
I guess I'm just trying to, I'm asking because if the project goes, if the project doesn't go over and the $15,000 is left over, are we buying like new collars for all the dogs or laptops? Or, you know, something like that for all of the dogs that attend the dog park?
Katie, the funds are specific for the construction of the dog park, not ancillary costs. But I appreciate your question on it.
Mr. Coyle?
It is the intention of the Dog Park Committee to form friends of the Dog Park afterwards, that I'm sure the two, obviously, these two women have been the main fundraisers and they're still working. They've got events planned. They're not going to stop even if the town gets money today, but they are, there will be, the two, first two people the Board of Selectmen appoint, I'm sure, to be on this committee to upkeep and maintenance of the park and to make sure that it is run properly.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. I'm going to put a leash on this debate if we can and wrap it up. All righty? All right, so the, ba-dum-bum. Let's, the motion on the floor is to approve $15,000 for a transfer out of stabilization fund requires a two-thirds vote to approve this. All right? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no? I'm going to ask for you to raise your hand, see if we can get a visual vote here. So all those, again, anybody who's sitting in the upper side, upper section of the auditorium, I cannot count your vote, you need to be sitting down or standing in front in the aisle. All those in favor of approving the $15,000 transfer out of stabilization for the dog park construction, please raise your hand. Thank you, and put your hands down. All those opposed, please raise your hand. It's too tough to call. I can declare a two-thirds vote, but it's too tough to call, so we will have to do a standing count. So, the three people that I had pointed earlier, Mr. DeCarlo, Mr. Christian, Mr. Noonan, I'm going to ask you to come forward. If you are in favor of this article, I'd ask you to stand and remain standing until your counter tells you you can sit down. Mr. Noonan will count the Finance Committee. Don't forget our cameraman, Billy Davis. Aaron, that's yours, Aaron. Mr. DeCarlo? Twenty-four. Mr. Noonan? Thirty-four. Mr. Christian? Forty-seven. Please be seated. All those opposed to Article twelve and $15,000 from stabilization, please rise and remain standing until your counter tells you to please be seated. Mr. Noonan? Nine. Mr. Christian? Ten. Mr. DeCarlo? Twenty. The ayes being 105, the nays being 39, the two-thirds motion does carry. Thank you very much. The time now being eight o'clock, I'd like to call the special town meeting in adjournment. And at this time, I'd like to call the annual town meeting to order. The annual town meeting warrant has been posted. It has, I believe it's 26 articles. I'd like to reintroduce the chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Matthew Sala.
Good evening. I would like to start out by thanking my fellow members of the Finance Committee. We have put in a lot of hours, going, meeting with all of the department heads, going over the budget, preparing for tonight, preparing for the year ahead. The members of the committee are, to my left, Greg Belizarian, Barbara Ray, Mike Platty, Joe Rojas, Russ Fuller, Dr. Patrick Sean Tyler, Renee Brown, and Katie Comas. Our recording secretary is Deb Libby at the end. We are all residents of Abington. We have all volunteered all of our time, meeting over the last several months at least once a week to come to a budget that is balanced and ready for your vote and your ayes. And we'll talk about the budget when we get to the approval. Was there anything?
Nope.
Okay. Good to go.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sala. We're going to move on to Article one of the annual town meeting, which is the budget article for the upcoming fiscal year. We will be going page by page through the article as printed in your warrant, but before we do that, Mr. Sala has to read the specific motion, which is actually contained in a handout that was available to you, but he has to read it into the record, so if you bear with, Mr. Sala, I'd like to give him the floor to read the motion to approve the town's operating budget.
And I will read the motion momentarily. There was one thing that I did remember. We have at least three people on the Finance Committee who are resigning at the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, so we will have openings if anyone is interested in helping to craft the budget and serve in this manner in the future.
If you're interested in serving on the Finance Committee, please contact me. Or if you can't contact me, you can contact the Town Manager's office and they will get us in touch. Thank you.
The Finance Committee moves that the town appropriate the total sum of $53,344,318 to defray general fund salaries and expenses of the town for fiscal year 2020 and to set forth in the detailed budget under the column entitled Finance Committee Recommendations FY 2020. And to meet said appropriations, raise and appropriate the sum of $52,287,254 and transfer the total sum of $1,057,064 as follows. Fund 460 Golf Enterprise indirect costs, $46,590. Fund 470 Sewer Enterprise indirect costs, $288,546. Fund 490 Water Special Reserve Fund indirect costs, debt services, $721,928. And further, that the town approve the following special revenue and enterprise funds for the fiscal year 2020 budgets, all as set forth at the end of the detailed budget. Appropriate from conservation receipts for the total sum of $2,600 to defray the conservation receipts reserved expenses for fiscal year 2020 as set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from golf receipts, the total sum of $335,155 to defray the Golf Enterprise Fund salary and expense for fiscal year 2020 with the sum of $46,590 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the Golf Enterprise Fund for funding, all as set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from sewer receipts, the total sum of $2,470,605 to defray the Sewer Enterprise Fund salaries and expenses for fiscal year 2020 with the sum of $288,546 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for funding, all set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from water receipts, the total sum of $2,968,389 and from water receipts reserved, $200,000 to defray the Water Special Reserve Fund salaries and expense for fiscal year 2020 with the sum of $721,928 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocate to the Water Special Reserve Fund for funding, all as set forth in the detailed budget. And further, that the town approve to reduce $141,662 from the liability insurance account and $21,959 from the health insurance account to increase the police salaries account.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Just to clarify, the third bullet down, I believe you misspoke and said Water Special Reserve Fund. It's Water Special Revenue Fund as printed?
My apologies.
Nope, thank you. You did a great job. That is the motion. It is a balanced budget. What we'll be voting on will be the far right-hand column, which is bolded, which is the Finance Committee's recommendation, which also, I believe, matches the Town Manager's recommendation. So the motion is now on the floor. So what I'd like to do, and as we have done traditionally, is we'll go page by page. We're going to ask if there's any questions on any line item on page one, page two, page three. If there is, we will address them as we go. And as, when we get to the end of the budget, we'll take one vote to approve the budget or approve the budget as amended if there's a need for any amendments. If you have any questions, feel free to rise and ask. So for the first page, the line items are run from town meeting salaries down to reserve fund. Are there any questions on the first page, sir? Moderator recognizes Mr. Richard Collins.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. The question, it starts on page one, but really, I think it has a ripple effect through the rest of it. We know there are staffing changes coming to Town Hall. We have heard rumors about there being additional DPW employees. I'm hoping we can get provided some information or background as to what the staffing changes are going to be in the municipal government in the coming year.
Great question. Either Mr. Sala or Mr. LaFond want to do a summary of what's expected for the upcoming year? Moderator recognizes Town Manager.
There really aren't any significant changes administratively. We do have in the budget one additional DPW worker specifically for the purposes of park and recreation. We do have equal amount of funds in the expense budget of the DPW for the purposes of assisting with maintenance of this facility. To date, we're not too sure what the best approach will be, whether it's adding yet another position or hired services. This is a conversation we've had with the DPW director and there's agreement that this is the right approach. The other significant change, I would say, is the elimination of a position, the Assistant Town Manager position. Those duties are being filtered about other town administrative offices. That's approximately $110,000 prorated for three quarters, three quarters, three quarters of this fiscal year. Those are the only other significant changes. As you can see by the bottom of the motion, the amount that is being transferred from the liability account and the health insurance account is for the second year of the police contract. You recall in this special town meeting warrant, you approved the contract with the Police Association. This change is to fund that in the second year, which could not have been planned for pending the ratification of that contract.
One of the additional changes in, with the elimination of the Assistant Town Manager position, there is now in the budget a stipend for the Chief Procurement Officer duties. It's a $12,000 stipend that will go to the one person who fills that. In the coming year, that will be the town accountant. But it is a stipend specifically. It's not tied to one particular person or added into a salary. It is for work, specific work being done.
Thank you, Mr. Sala and Mr. LaFond. Are there any other questions on page one of the budget? Or in general? If not, I invite you to all turn to page two, where we run from town accountant salaries down to the total of the total general government. Accountant assessors, town council, they're all in front of us. Any questions? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Kathryn Salem, 22 Lantern Lane. I just have two questions, one on total tax title. Seems like a big chunk change, and building maintenance seemed to go up considerably, and I was wondering if you could explain those two.
Sorry, I just wanted, she didn't hear your name again.
Kathryn Salem, 22 Lantern Lane.
Thank you.
Yeah, on the building maintenance? I'm sorry. Okay, the building maintenance, first of all, I'll say. The building maintenance is up significantly because all the electric costs from all the departments, non-school, have been consolidated into that budget. That is for basically ease of administration. So it's not additional funds, it's just a movement of existing funds to another location. And, I'm sorry.
To that, there are corresponding budgets that decreased because the electric budget was taken out of each of the individual departments and centralized there.
And I think, Mrs. Salem, your other question was the tax title went up, right? That was from 20,000 to 50,000.
That's simply a matter of work by the treasurer to collect taxes. And there's outstanding taxes. Work has to be done, and that has not been sufficient in past years to pursue uncollected taxes. taxes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on Page Two of the budget?
Just as a quick point to that, there are several articles that we'll be getting to a little bit further down that are intended to help the treasurer-collector to better collect overdue taxes. So that is a focus for the town for the year moving forward, and that was part of why that was increased.
Moderator recognizes Mr. Negreli.
Rich Negreli, 340 Diane Circle. What is the $23,977.57 for the zoning board salaries? Who's that for?
Secretary. It's for your secretary. The zoning board members are pure volunteers, Mr. Negreli is one of them. So, sorry, you're not getting paid again this year either. That is for the part-time secretary that serves your board. Thanks. Any other questions on Page Two of the budget? If not, please turn to Page Three. Starts on the top with police salaries and goes down to the total highway and public works. Any questions on Page Three? There being none, please turn to Page Four, where we go from Board of Health salaries down to the last line item is self-field assessment. And again, we're looking at the far right-hand column for approval. Anything to be, any questions on, sorry, Page Four? If not, please turn to Page Five. Page Five has the total of the budget, and then below that are the breakdown of the enterprise and special revenue funds, with Conservation Commission, the golf course, and sewer enterprise funds. Is there anything to be heard, or any questions on the fifth page? Yes, sir. The moderator recognizes Mr. Paul Malika.
Thank you. I missed the page before, but on the debt that the town has, approximately, how much longer does it have to go before it's paid off?
So you're back on Page Four, looking at total debt service?
Yes.
How much, how much longer does it take to pay off that debt?
Yeah, what's left?
I mean, it's a mixture of different things, but I'm sure the Town Manager or accountant could speak to it in general terms.
That would be very general terms. As the moderator pointed out, this is a collection of both existing debt that's non-exempt, as well as debt that is exempt under Prop. Two and a Half. For instance, the school project is exempt under Two and a Half. I think we've got, it's one more year, I think, on the town hall and library. So without, you know, providing you a specific debt schedule, I can't tell you right now which are reducing this coming fiscal year. All I will say is that is a collection of both excluded and non-excluded debt. And I'm sorry, I can't be more specific.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond. If you'd like more details, I'm sure that you can get that at the Town Hall. Is there anything else to be heard on Pages Four or Five? If not, please turn to the last page, Page Six, which simply has the sewer revenues and the water revenues. Any questions? If not, we just need a majority vote to approve our town budget. Are there any questions at all about the town budget? If not, all those in favor of approving Article One in the motion put forth by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Thank you. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds, $2,899 for the Town Clerk's salary line item for the purchase of increasing the salary of the Town Clerk. She is our only paid elected official, so we have a separate vote for our elected officials. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Two and raise and appropriate the sum of $2,899 to increase the Town Clerk's salary budget line item for fiscal year 2020.
Is there anything to be heard on Article Two? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Three, Article Three is to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds to borrow, lease, purchase, or otherwise provide for the following capital items. This is our capital plan for the coming year, so the chart, which is broken down on Page Six, Page Seven, and Page Eight, lists on the left the department and the item to be purchased or leased. In the column under the amount, gives you the dollar figure, and then in the far right hand, it's the funding source. As you can see, some of them are from available free cash, some are raised and appropriate, some are coming directly from some of the water accounts and the sewer retained earning account. Any questions on the proposed capital plan? Do you want to come forward, sir? Ma'am?
Sean, do I need to make the motion first?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Sala needs to make a motion.
The Finance Committee moves to approve and appropriate the amounts stated in Article Three as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Mr. Collins.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. A couple of quick questions about free cash that's being used to pay for this. It's my understanding that the town has had a free cash number the past four years or so around or above a million dollars each of those four years. Okay. Is there a way to understand where this surplus is coming from, whether it's a combination of excess property tax collections above what was anticipated, conservative budgeting, kind of what's causing these annual surpluses, which is a wonderful, terrific thing?
It is both of those. It's conservative forecasting for estimates of received taxes for growth, for state aid, and it's also our department's doing a good job of taking care of their money and having money left over at the end of the year.
Thank you, and I hope that happens again next year, and then we're back here again with another million-dollar free cash number to deal with. And if so, I'm glad we're buying three new police cruisers, and I'm glad we're replacing the roof of the council and aging building, and I'm glad we're replacing the parking lot at the Woodsdale. One of these years, however, I hope our priority can be fixing up some of the parks and playgrounds using the free cash money as well. So I hope you'll consider that for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Yes, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Lee Forrest, 115 Hampton Way. Just had a question about the scan voting system. How old are the ones that are being replaced, and why are they being replaced, and what is going to replace them?
Thank you. Mr. Sala?
Lee Ann, do you know exactly how old?
Twenty-two years old, the current ones that are to be replaced if this is approved. And I'm sorry, someone, what is, what is being purchased, I believe, is the question?
I don't know exactly what's being purchased. I know that it's sort of state-of-the-art voting machines, one thing that I...
Town Clerk hates to use the microphone, but we're going to ask her to.
And while she's coming up, I will state that during the past years' worth of elections, the machines that we do have, which are, as stated, are 22-years-old, have been having issues with jamming and some of them not working, so it has become a higher priority.
They're just, it's a new, new and improved upgraded machine where the ballots will not get jammed, we won't have to sit behind and help to feed them through the police officers, and the machines that we have right now, they're no longer making parts for, so, pretty much obsolete.
A fine job. Thank you very much. Anything else, any other questions on the capital plan? If not, we'll take a vote to approve the Finance Committee's motion to approve the article. All those in favor of approving the capital plan in Article Three as presented in the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to set the expenditure limit for each of the following revolving funds pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Section 53E and a Half. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves that the town amend Chapter 124 of the town's general bylaws relative to revolving funds by deleting subsection E in Section 124-1, so as to terminate the Police Department Marijuana Fines Revolving Fund, and by amending subsection K of Section 124-1, by changing the percentage of permit fees to 50%, and by amending the spending limit to $115,000.
So, if I can help to explain, and please correct me if I'm wrong, these, last year, the law changed, and we set the revolving funds are now part of our general bylaws. So what you see in your warrant, these different revolving funds and amounts are already printed in our bylaws. So moving forward, we only need to bring this item up if we want to change anything. This year, we kind of showed you what's printed, and we're talking about what we're going to change. But in future years, we may not see this article if there's no changes, or we'll only see what is proposed to be changed. What Mr. Sala has made a presentation is currently in the bylaw is a fund for the Police Department Marijuana Fines Revolving Fund. Because marijuana is now legal, we're deleting the fines and that fund. There is also a line item, which is actually on the top of Page Nine in your warrant, the Building Department, which currently reads that 65% of the fees are used to pay the salaries for those inspectors. It's being mended now to be 50%, and we're changing the maximum that can be spent out of that account to the $115,000. Hope I explained that right?
It was $135,000. It's being brought down because they did a project to scan the documents for the Building Department, and the project has completed.
Are there any questions on the motion made by the Finance Committee? If not, all those in favor of approving the motion in Article Four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds, a sum of money to fund and implement the cost items of the collective bargaining agreement between the town and AFSCME Council 93 Local 1700 and the Avenue Managers Association covering the period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2023, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve and implement the cost items for the first year of the collective bargaining agreement with the AFSCME Council 93 Local 1700 in the amount of $17,000, and to approve and implement the cost items for the first year of the collective bargaining agreement with the Abington Managers Association in the amount of $39,000, and to appropriate the total sum of $56,000 for such purposes by transferring the sum of $11,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund, and by raising and appropriating the sum of $45,000.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. And I'm told, for those of you who didn't know like me, the AFSCME is our DPW Union, Department of Public Works Union. Anything to be heard on the motion from Mr. Sala and Finance Committee? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Five as presented in the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds, a sum of $14,000 for student transportation services, the Avenue students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-rented students for the 2019-20 school year, take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Six and to raise and appropriate the sum of $14,000 as printed in the warrant.
Anything to be heard in Finance Committee's motion? If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion in Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Seven, see if the town will vote to adopt the report of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2020, the community preservation budget. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee and to appropriate the sum of $361,436 from fiscal year 2020 estimated annual revenues as printed in the warrant. And defers questions to Chairman Paul Malika from the Community Preservation Committee.
It's now Chairman Jeff Rangel, I'm told.
Oh, Jeff Rangel.
That being said, all of the items that the Community Preservation Committee has had their hearings, and they have presented their proposed expenditures and the projects to be funded, those are the projects that have been submitted to them for consideration. Are there any questions on the Community Preservation Article, Article Seven? If not, hearing none. All those in favor of approving Article Seven as presented in the warrant and appropriating the sum of $361,436 from the estimated annual revenues, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate, borrow, lease, or otherwise provide the sum of $350,000 to purchase and equip a new lifeline ambulance and stretcher system, replace the 2002 Rescue Two ambulance, or take any other action relative thereto, from the Fire Chief. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves that the town appropriate the sum of $325,000 to purchase and equip new lifeline ambulance and stretcher system to meet the appropriation, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow said sum under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section Seven or Eight, as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereof, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes by this vote, less any such premium...
Approved by this vote.
Approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of insurance, and such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 20, as amended, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and execute on behalf of the town any and all documents as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. That language is referred to us and required to us by our bond attorneys. The proposal is to borrow the $325,000 to purchase the desired ambulance and the stretcher system. This will require at least a two-thirds vote. When the town borrows money, we need to have at least a two-thirds vote. Is there any questions, anything to be heard on this Article Eight?
The Finance Committee would like to thank the Chief of the Fire Department, John Noddle, and the department itself for working with us and going back and looking at the sum. We were able to reduce the amount that the town would have to pay through their hard work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Thank you, Chief Noddle. Anything else to be heard on Article Eight? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Eight in the motion made by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Nine, the Finance Committee, sorry, I'm reading your motion, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds, a sum of $5,000, to fund the health imperative violence prevention and intervention program for services provided to survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence in FY 2020, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Nine and to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 as printed in the warrant.
Is there anything to be heard on Article Nine? If not, all those in favor of approving the motion for Article Nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, lease, or otherwise provide a sum of $100,000 for the purpose of hiring a consulting firm to perform a feasibility study for our Abington Fire Department. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves that the town appropriate the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of hiring a consulting firm to perform a feasibility study for the Fire Department as described in the warrant, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow said sum under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section Seven or Eight, as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of insurance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 20, as amended, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and execute on behalf of the town any and all documents as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. I should have warned you, it was another bond and borrowing article, so Matt had to read that once again. So the motion again is essentially to borrow the $100,000 for the purpose of the feasibility study for the Fire Department. Mr. Franny, moderator recognizes former moderator, former selectman, former school committee member, my uncle, Mike Franny.
And I'm still married, too. Just a question, Sean. When we went about developing the feasibility study in the school, we pretty much went over every aspect of any question that anybody in this town could ask. We went over the elementary schools, what the needs were there, and when the plan was finally put before the town, it was very well-developed and it was very well-accepted. There was no, what if you do this, or what if you do that? So my question in this study here, is that going to go along the same lines? Are they going to have any public hearings on it? Are they going to be like, they're going to go beyond just studying the north, in the center school locations? You know, I think, I think as a town, we all recognize we have a lot of needs, but we kind of like base it on our ability to pay, and that helps us make those decisions. So, you know, I just don't want to go through this, chief, and have those questions come up, what if we do this, or what if we do that, so...
Thank you, Mr. Franny. Mr. Chief Noddle, Chief John Noddle, Avenue Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Franny. John Noddle, your Fire Chief, 84 Constitution Ave. Yes, the answer to your question is, we are trying to basically model how the schools did theirs. By having this study, first of all, this takes it out of the Fire Department's opinion. It's an independent opinion, and we are not architects, we're not engineers. They're going to look at real estate that may be available besides, you know, North School, we have been floating that idea around, but they're going to look at all aspects. What can be done, if possible, at both stations? What upgrades do we need? Are we even physically able to upgrade these? Or would they be financially feasible to do that? This study, we're hoping to answer all those questions as well, and then at that point, bring it back to a town. bring it back to a town to have you voters decide where we want to go as a town with the direction of the Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief Noddle. Is there anything to be heard on Article Ten? Yes, sir. Moderator recognizes Ken Coyle.
Ken Coyle, two twenty-two High Street. I just have a question on Article Eight and Article Ten. And Article Ten originally said that it was going to be a transfer from certified free cash, and now we're talking about raising appropriate and borrowing. Is there a length of borrowing that you're going to borrow for this and/or the new ambulance?
I think you're going to do the borrowing, the selectman, right? Wanted to speak to that.
I just don't want to tie the hands of future town meetings that we tie up money if we've won for a certain amount of years.
Ultimately, the treasurer will provide options. Usually, they're fairly obvious at that point, and the selectmen ultimately have to sign off on what those, on what the term is, the length of term. This particular item, the one hundred thousand dollars, although that doesn't seem like a lot of money to be borrowing, the, what could happen is if this, if a larger project goes forward, this expense would be amortized with the larger project. So that may or may not happen. So that's why you'll see it as a borrow at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond. Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Anything else to be heard on Article Ten? As I mentioned, this does require a two-thirds vote for approval. All those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion in Article Ten, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you. Article Eleven, Article Eleven is a zoning article that I'd like to step down for. I'm going to bring up Deputy Moderator Bob Kelly will handle this article for you. Thank you.
Article Eleven is to see if the town will vote to amend the table of use regulations in Section one seventy-five dash twenty-one of the Abbotton zoning bylaw by revising portions of the column entitled M U P D D, Multiple Use Planned Development District, as shown in the table below, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee defers to the recommendation of the Planning Board.
This article seeks to revise and update the list of uses to be allowed in the Multiple Use Planned Development District, or the M U P P D District. This district is located and limited in two specific areas of town, on the north side of Chestnut Street, west of Hancock Street, on the north side of Adams Street, in the area of the former Naval Air Base. According to our zoning bylaw, the purpose and intent of this district is as follows. The purpose of the Multiple Use Planning Development District is to establish areas and standards for the overall planned development of land with mixed uses. The district attempts to accommodate low-impact activities in an overall low-density, but with extensive use of clusters surrounding land uses. The following regulations strive to allow a more flexible planned development process than is possible through the strict conventional zoning regulations. There are eighty different types of uses listed in our zoning bylaw, depending on the zoning district. Some uses are allowed as of right, some require a special permit, and others require a use variance. However, as presently written, there are only three uses allowed as of right within this district. Those uses are a church, daycare, or a farm. In order to encourage investment in low-impact commercial development in these areas of town, this article seeks to amend twelve of the eighty listed zoning uses, so that a business might be more willing to come to Abbotton and invest in these areas by only allowing low-impact uses. The amendment would allow for such uses as professional or doctor office, or a printing, plumbing, or electrical repair shop, or a light manufacturing or technology company. If a special permit is granted, five other types of businesses would be allowed after a public hearing, such as a veterinarian, a beverage bottling facility, such as a craft brewery, a marijuana establishment, or a construction of landscaping or landscaping company which stores equipment or materials on site. Again, this district is located north of Chestnut Street and the northeast corner of town on the north side of Adams Street. This proposed zoning amendment was actually before you last year's town meeting, but due to a problem with newspaper advertising, we were not allowed to vote this article last year. The petition was resubmitted. Copies of this proposed zoning amendment were provided to the Board of the Selectmen and the zoning board, and the Planning Board held the required public hearing to review this proposed zoning amendment. The Board voted five to zero to approve the amendment with three minor revisions. The Planning Board makes a motion to approve Article Eleven as presented, but with the following three revisions. The letter Y, which is yes, would be changed to S P, Special Permit, for uses under numbered G three, H two, and H five. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion on Mr. Smith's proposed article?
Rich Nagrally, three forty Diane Circle, Z B A, Kim. This article here is taking away special permits that would come in front of the zoning board. And I do know there's only one development in this town right now, it's at Chestnut Street, and that has already gone through all the boards, and that will change, from what I can see here, what will be allowed in that area for Chestnut Street that has already been approved. So I wish the town would not accept this. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article Eleven?
Michael Noonan, sixty-three Mulberry Drive. Question on number seven, under G, we already have two trucking terminals. Why is there a no on that? We have availability on Adams Street to have another one, and also, with the limited storage and so forth, why is there a no on the open lot storage of trucks and trailers used for temporary storage?
Mr. Smith, if you want to take that? It's just that we felt that the area would be better without that, and if someone needed that, they could go and have a variance made.
A variance, or should we put it down as special permit?
Which exactly one are you talking about? Gee, what? Oh.
The other one is trucking and freight, and we already have two. I think that should be a yes, and on the open lot storage of trucks and trailers used for temporary storage, I think that should be at least a special permit.
Well, the Board had the hearing, and that was the vote on it. Mr. Riley?
Sean Riley, twenty-six Russell Lane. I helped to draft this article, because I'm rather familiar with zoning bylaw. To the former, the previous question, not being the moderator in this article, we can't really change anything or loosen up any restrictions, anything that wasn't already in writing and proposed as part of the hearing. So what you would like to request, to loosen up some permitting for the, for the uses that you just identified, would have to be a new article and a new public hearing, so that the town was put on notice that yet that's what you were proposing. That wasn't proposed for this. What this proposes is to make some changes to low-impact uses, not heavy uses, heavy traffic generators, and the special permit, again, would remain in this, in this district as always with the Planning Board. I would urge that you do vote to approve this article. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion?
Joseph Chase, three Wyman Road. For many years, we have tried to get more commercial business into the town of Abbotton. It helps on our, it helps reduce the load on our residential taxes. It also provides jobs. I think the changes the Planning Board suggested will help in those objectives. It's, you know, I request your vote of approval. Thank you.
There's no more discussion on Article Eleven. We'll now take a vote on it, and I want to note that I need a two-thirds vote for this to pass. If we don't have unanimous, or if I don't feel there's two-thirds, we'll have to have a standing count. So all those in favor of Article Eleven, as proposed by Mr. Smith, please signify by saying aye. All those against, no? We have a two-thirds vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Two points of interest. There is a red car out there with its hazard flashers. Jan, we're not sure if it's your car, but the hazards are flashing, and we just want to make sure you have a battery when you leave, so I want to check. Also, I was informed, Matt, if you could try to please speak into the microphone a little bit louder, it's a little difficult in the back to hear some of what's being said. So we move on to Article Twelve. Articles Twelve through fourteen are all kind of interrelated. Mr. Sala referred to these earlier. These are articles to kind of strengthen up the tax collector's abilities to do the job. Article Twelve is to see if the town will vote to accept provisions of General Law's Chapter eighty-three, Section sixteen A to sixteen F, authorizing the town to impose liens on properties for which unpaid sewer charges are outstanding, including properties located outside the town, but which are receiving sewer services from the town, or take any other action relative thereto from the treasurer-collector. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Twelve as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve as printed in the warrant. Is there anything to be heard? Any questions on Article Twelve? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Twelve, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to accept provisions of General Law's Chapter two hundred A, Section nine A, authorizing the town to dispose of abandoned funds held in the custody of the town per the procedure outlined in the statute, or take any other action relative thereto by the treasurer-collector. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant.
Is there anything to be heard in the Finance Committee's motion, Article Thirteen? If not, all those in favor of Finance Committee's motion, Article Thirteen, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to charge for each written demand issued by the collector a fee of twenty dollars to be added to and collected as part of the taxes authorized by Mass. General Law's Chapter sixty, Section fifteen, effective as of July first, two thousand nineteen, or take any other action relative thereto by the treasurer-collector. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Fourteen as printed in the warrant.
Anything to be heard in Article Fourteen? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Fourteen, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. No, it's not unanimous, but Article Fourteen passes. Article Fifteen and Sixteen are related, and I believe the Finance Committee has an update. First, Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter forty-four of the town's general bylaws by deleting Section forty-four dash two relative to the sale of real estate acquired for the non-payment of taxes in its entirety, or take any other action relative thereto by the treasurer-collector. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to pass over Article Fifteen. This was originally believed to be inconsistent with state law. Upon further review from Town Council, it is, in fact, consistent with state law and does help the treasurer-collector.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Initially, we thought we were going to have to delete it, Section forty-four two in Article Fifteen, and then put in the new language in Article Sixteen. We're told we can keep the existing Article forty-four dash two and then add the language in Article Sixteen. So the Finance Committee's, step one, is proposing to pass over Article Fifteen, which would essentially keep Section forty-four dash two in place. Any question on Article Fifteen? If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion to pass over Article Fifteen, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaws by adding a new Section forty-four dash two in Chapter forty-four titled Tax Title Payment Plans, and to read as follows, or take any reaction relative thereto, and then you see it is actually numbered Section forty-four dash three and the text that follows. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Sixteen as printed in the warrant with the following correction. The bylaw section should be, should read number forty-four dash three, in order to correct a typographical error in the warrant.
So the motion is to approve Article Sixteen as presented with the correction in the opening line there that it should say Section forty-four dash three. Is there anything to be heard in the Finance Committee's motion? Yes, sir.
Tom Connolly, two Indian Brook Road, Abbotton, Mass. Just on Section D, all payment agreements shall comply with the following minimum requirements. Section two, the payment agreement may include a waiver of up to fifty percent of the interest that is accrued in the tax title account, but only if the taxpayer complies with the terms of the agreement. No taxes or collections costs may be waived. I really feel that's, that's a significant amount, and I would motion that we make it twenty-five percent, not the fifty percent.
Mr. Connolly makes a motion to approve Article Sixteen, but first with the amendment that D two is, I'm sorry, what'd you say, Tom? What was it? Not fifty, twenty-five, thank you. Motion to amend Section D dash two to make it be twenty-five percent instead of fifty percent. Is there any, that would be the first decision we're going to make. We're going to take a motion, we're going to take a vote on Mr. Connolly's proposed amendment. Are there any questions on the proposal to amend the fifty percent figure down to twenty-five percent?
I have a question, but I have a comment.
You may make a comment. Please approach the microphone, and please identify yourself with the name and address. Thank you.
Catherine Salem, twenty-two Lantern Lane. I don't see any problem with the language. It's up to fifty percent. That does not prohibit from it being twenty-five percent or any other number therefore, but it gives up to. For certain people in this town, perhaps that is a consideration that needs to be made, and I'd like to leave that flexibility in place.
Thank you, Mrs. Salem. Is there anything else to be heard on Mr. Connolly's motion to reduce the fifty percent down to twenty-five percent? If not, we'll first take a motion on, on Mr. Connolly's motion. So I'm going to ask if you're in favor of reducing it to twenty-five, that would be an aye vote. If you're not in favor of reducing it to twenty-five percent, it would be a no vote. All those in favor of approving Mr. Connolly's motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The amendment does not pass. Now we need to go back and vote on the original motion that Mr. Sala put forth, which is to approve Article Sixteen with the correction, the typographical correction, so that it reads as Section forty-four dash three. Anything to be heard on that motion, the article as a whole? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion on Article Sixteen, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It is, passes, majority passes. Article Seventeen. Article Seventeen is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to pursue the North Quincy Street Intersection Improvement Project. This is at the intersection at the end of Chestnut Street, North Quincy Street, down near the Brockton Line. I'm not going to read the whole article for you, but Mr. Sala does have a motion on behalf of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Parts A and C of Article Seventeen as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article A and, sorry, Section A and Section C. It's my understanding we do not need to include the language in Section B for the purposes that are intended in this article. Is there anything to be heard on the Finance Committee's motion? Any questions? Sir.
Rick Collins, seventy-four Orange Street. I just want to confirm that this isn't really costing us anything. Is this going to be paid, where we have to technically take the land, but then the state reimburses us?
That, the reason that we left out Section B is because we do not need to provide any town funds for this.
Okay.
So, yes.
We are, we are taking land somehow?
Chapter ninety funds are to be used. Correct me if I'm wrong, and, yep. Chapter ninety funds which are provided to the town by the state, as opposed to it being town tax, taxpayer dollars.
Are we, so is this coming out of what we normally get for Chapter ninety, or is this, are we getting more to help pay for this?
I'd like to recognize the Department of Public Works Director, Mr. John Stone, who regretfully has to approach the microphone. Thank you, John.
Thank you. This isn't a Chapter ninety project, it's a TIP project. It's being funded by, through the state's TIP project, program, excuse me, Transportation Improvement Program. So they're paying for it, they're funding it, and it doesn't come out of Chapter ninety.
So for that reason, we do not need Section B of this article. Section B would be asking to take money out of another account or to tax the local residents for that. So the motion on the floor from the Finance Committee is to approve Article Seventeen, Sections A and C. Anything else to be heard on this article? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer available funds to some of twenty-five thousand dollars to enable the Planning Board to retain the services of a professional consultant, to review the Abboton zoning bylaws, and prepare recommendations for amendments that are appropriate for modifications consistent with the goals and objectives of the master plan, and anything incidental related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto by the Planning Board. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Eighteen and to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars as printed in the warrant.
Is there anything to be heard in the Finance Committee's motion for Article Eighteen? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Eighteen, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer available funds to some of ten thousand dollars for professional survey of Griffin's Dairy property in preparation for the construction of playing fields at the site, and anything incidental related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto by the Town Manager and thereto, or take any other action relative thereto by the town manager and the Park and Recreation Committee. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 19 and to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 as printed in the warrant.
Is there anything to be heard in the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article 19? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 20. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of all or portions of the town-owned property at 65, located at 65 Baxter Ave., known as the Center School property, containing 13 acres, more or less, and described in a deed recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 1859, Page 219, on such terms and conditions as the Board deems in the best interest of the town, or take any other action relative thereto by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee has no recommendation for Article 20 because our committee deadlocked on a four-to-four vote.
Finance Committee has no recommendation, so I'd like to defer to the Board of Selectmen as their article. One of the selectmen want to make a motion? Mr. Connolly? Moderator recognizes Thomas Connolly from the Board of Selectmen.
Tom Connolly, 2 Indian Brook Road, Abington, Mass. We, the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of this article, please.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 20. Is there anything to be heard on Article 20? Sir? Welcome back, Mr. Michael Frainey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a question. When we've talked in the past around town, amongst towns, about the Center School, it's often been said that we thought that that property should be subdivided to keep the Murphy Field independent. When this is going out for the RFPs, or however you're going to, will you be able to determine how much we would get if we sold the whole parcel, and how much we would get if we subdivided it and sold just the school and kept the Murphy Field?
Mr. LaFond?
It's up to you, Mr. Connolly.
Mr. Connolly?
I'll take it.
To all, we don't know how much we would get until it went out to bid, but it gives us the opportunity to subdivide it, which we feel would be beneficial to the town, so...
Mr. Frainey?
I agree with that, Tom, but how are you, are you going to get one bid, or two bids? You're going to get one bid for the whole piece of property, and then a second bid for what if we kept the school, sold the school and kept the property? I don't know if you're following that or not.
No, I think I am.
Mr. LaFond?
If I could, Tom, this is a recommendation that, by the surplus schools committee, ad-hoc committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen to study this issue. What this article does is it gives the Board of Selectmen discretion to determine what the needs of the town are with regard to subdividing that, whether or not to keep the recreation area there. That is something that, you know, Mr. Frainey, there's, you know, that's a decision that's made for the best interests of the town first. What comes from that will be what would be put out for an RFP, so it's really not easy to say what the financial implications are of one versus the other. I think the initial, the initial concern, the initial decision has to be what the Board feels is in the best interest of the town from a recreation standpoint. The rest follows from there.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond. Mr. Shea, would you like to approach the mic? Moderator recognizes Mr. Joseph Shea.
Joseph Shea, 3 Wyman Road. I work in the Assessors' Office. One of the things I did in the last few years was review the Center School as to what deeds applied to it. It was actually purchased in several different deeds. We only refer to one here. Might be a question for town council, is that going to be an issue? I think it was more than one deed with use for purchase.
Mr. Shea's asking if, if the reference to the one deed is sufficient, if he is correct, that there may be more than one deed, would it invalidate the article, or the discretion of the Board to move forward?
No, it would not. This is just for informational purposes.
Okay. You want to take the mic?
Sorry. Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. The question is whether or not the, there may be additional deeds referenced for this particular property, and whether not referencing those deeds would affect the validity of the article. And it's my opinion that that would not affect the validity of the article. The property is referenced here by its address, by its description, and by at least one of the deeds, in my opinion. That's a sufficient indicator for this body to vote an authorization. If the time comes that the Board is actually going to sell this property, a full title rundown would be done and the proper references would be inserted.
I just want to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Corbo, and thank you, Mr. Shea. If I could, he was up first. Recognize Mr. Malika. Paul Malika?
Thank you. I just have a comment. I read over in the past several years that a town had surplus property similar to getting rid of it, and, and what they did is they, they put with it permits for specific uses that added to the value of the bids that they would get, so might be something to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Malika. Moderator recognizes Ms. Platy.
Kate Platy, 45 Baxter Ave., so, full disclosure, this property is in my backyard. But, on, it doesn't really matter because we're moving anyway, but I will say that I believe that this school is part of the smaller community of our area. My children use this school as a place to sled. The playground, which is still there, they use all the time. The field, I know just from working at recreation, has been pretty important to youth leagues and things like that, so not splitting that up. But further to that, this is like a really quiet street, and I think at the end of our street, we have some apartment buildings, and to open this up to any sort of purchase. Mr. Malika suggested that maybe we could only allow certain things in there, but I think if we turn those into apartments, it changes the whole face of the neighborhood. And I think we've been doing that a lot lately in this town. And personally, if I got my way, I think the kids in this town don't really have a place to go. The kids, we don't have a community center. We have a senior center, which is great for the seniors, but we don't have a place for the kids. We have a drug problem in this state. It's not just an Abington problem. We don't have a place where the kids can go and hang out and shoot hoops. I think this is a perfect little place for that. I've been saying that for years. I don't really think that anybody wants to hear it, but I just would be really sad to see, it would just change the whole face of the neighborhood. So I would ask you to reconsider, and maybe, can I make a motion to pass over, or?
You can, but it won't do any good.
Because the positive motion is right.
We go with the positive motion. Mr. Connolly made the motion to approve, so if you're, if you don't want to support his motion, you just vote against it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the motion on the floor is to approve Article 20, to give the Selectmen the authority to do what's in the best interest after they consider the different options that may come before them. Is there anything else to be heard on Article 20? If not, take a motion to, the motion is to approve Article 20 as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Very good. All right. We're going to do it by hands, okay? So, all those in favor of approving Article 20, please raise your hand. Okay, please put your hands down. All those opposed to Article 20, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, the ayes have passed. We'll move on to Article 21. Thank you. Article 21 is to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter, Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53-F34. This is regarding the PEG Access and Cable-related Special Revenue Fund. It's my understanding that there's going to be a motion coming to you where we're not going to use a special revenue fund, but an enterprise fund, so Mr. Sala will be reading a motion to make those amendments, to switch out that language, and we also, this is for your local cable access television. PEG is Public Education and Government, PEG. So this is under a new DoI directive to transfer the money into this account. Mr. Sala, hold on. Attorney Corbo would like to advise Mr. Sala before he makes the motion. Mr. Sala, whenever you are ready for the motion on Article 21.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 21 as printed in the warrant with the following amendments. In the first line, replace the words "Section 53-F and 3/4" with "Section 53-E and 1/2." In the second line, replace the phrase "Special Revenue Account" with "Enterprise Account." In the second and third lines, replace the phrase "PEG Access and Cable-related Special Revenue Fund" with "PEG Access and Cable-related Enterprise Fund." And, in the 12th line, replace the phrase "PEG Access and Cable-related Fund" with "PEG Access and Cable-related Enterprise Fund." And further transfer from PEG Enterprise Retained Earnings, the sum of $306,552, to fund the operations of said PEG Access and Cable-related Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Is there anything to be heard on this Article 21? Yes, if you could approach the microphone. Name and address, please.
Kristen Menudie, 653 Plymouth Street.
Kristen, if you'd just say that again so they hear you on the microphone.
Okay. Kristen Menudie, 653 Plymouth Street. What is the benefit to cable subscribers going from the original motion as the town council wrote it, and going to an enterprise fund?
Basically, what's the difference between a special revenue account and an enterprise account?
Well, I want to know what the benefit is to cable subscribers for doing this.
Town Council, Greg Corbo.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. So, this is really just an accounting article. It doesn't result in any financial change to the town or the cable subscribers in terms of what they're receiving in terms of benefits. So, the town has a contract or, or gives a license to the cable providers, and as part of that, they're required to give a certain amount of money to the town for providing PEG access, or public access, community television. And what the Department of Revenue has said was that in order to use those funds for that purpose, they need to be put into a special account. And the legislature created a new provision of the General Laws a couple of years ago that allowed you to have a specific account for cable funds, which was the original 53-F and 3/4. Or you can do it as an enterprise. Now, the functional difference is that in order to take funds out of a cable account, town meeting has to appropriate the funds every year in order to do that. Once they get put into an enterprise account, then they can be spent without further appropriation for the purposes of the enterprise, as long as the budget is set on an annual basis. So, again, that was a long way of saying, there's no functional difference to either the town or the users, it's really just an accounting mechanism, and the cable committee decided that the enterprise fund would be an easier way of accounting for this than the other way.
I want to hold that. Ms. Menudie?
Thank you. Who does the accounting? The town or the enterprise?
The town accountant does that.
That's the new thing, that's why we're putting it into the town, right? Yeah, previously, again, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to learn this stuff too, it was a nonprofit company that was handling it, and now the Department of Revenue has asked that those funds be put into the town's control, so that we're creating a fund on the books, so you'll see it every year, moving forward with the budget. I didn't answer it. Do you have a question, Ms. Menudie? Mr. Bazanson, Alex Bazanson?
761 Randolph Street. It is still a nonprofit that will administer the day-to-day operation of the Community Access. The money will just be going to the town, which will transfer it to the Community Access Board of Directors. In the past, it went directly to the Community Access, and they deposited the money. It is just an accounting, nothing is going to change on your cable, except it will improve over the next couple of years, but the money is still the same. Everyone pays a franchise fee on your cable bill, that's where this money comes from. And if you look at the bottom of your cable bill, it says franchise fee, and that's the money that goes to Abington Community Access. There's about 5,500 subscribers in the town between Verizon and Comcast, and each one, Verizon and Comcast, send quarterly checks to the town, which, like I said, in the past has gone directly to Abington Community Access. Now it will be going to the town in a enterprise fund, and they will budget every year to use those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Bazanson. Mr. Coyle?
Ken Coyle, 222 High Street. Just an interesting little tidbit, because I went to one of the Abington CAM's meetings. Massachusetts is the only state in the country where the funds have to go to the cable. The town can't keep them and use them for other purposes. Massachusetts is the only, the only state in the country that they have to be used for cable purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Anything else? Mr. DeCarlo, Henry DeCarlo?
Henry DeCarlo, 187 Central Street. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the town council, there's a difference between franchise fee and PEG access fee on the bills, and are these commingled in this account, are these separated? Because the franchise fee for many years, for all the years we've had it, goes directly to the general fund, and the PEG access fee goes to the Cable Access Corporation.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. I think this is more a question for the accountant.
Go answer that.
I'm sorry. Neither fee has come into the town prior, right? It went into that account? Henry, Mr. DeCarlo is saying that one of the fees did?
Yes, it was a per subscriber franchise fee that went directly to the general fund every year. And I know this because one year we got the wrong checks going to the wrong locations. It's a smaller amount, it's a flat rate fee, and then the PEG access fee goes to the Access Control, the Access Corporation. And I want, in reading this, I'm not sure that it's distinct, it's distinguished in this article.
Mr. Bazanson, can you enlighten us?
I was told there was a small fee that does go to the town, but Mr. LaFond's looking strange. I'm not familiar with that, but there's, the average bill, I think there's about $3 to $5, if you look down there on your bill, that goes to Community Access. I don't know if, what Mr. DeCarlo was talking about, if that still exists or not. But the money that is taking, taken in is to be used for Community Access and only Community Access. This is exactly why we had to change the ambulance fund, because that money could not go into the general fund, because it was in an enterprise account. So we changed that so the ambulance money can go into the general fund. We want the enterprise account so no cable access money can go in the general fund, and it can only be used for Community Access.
Thank you, Mr. Bazanson, and just information I'm trying to gather, apparently the Department of Revenue is now requiring that these accounts be set up like this now, right? Okay. Do you have further to say, Ms. Menudie?
Making a motion to pass over this amendment and go with the original writ, to have the funds go as the Department of Revenue directed to a PEG, until there's a clear understanding of what this is, where the money comes from, how it's going to be accounted for.
All right, if you'd like to pass over it, you're basically just going to have to vote against Mr. Sala's motion. Mr. Sala's motion is on the floor right now, and that's the only motion on the floor. Is there anything else to be heard on Article 21 as presented, as motion by the Finance Committee? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Menudie, Mr. Bazanson, for helping us explain that. Article 22, see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 64-N, Section 3, as amended to impose a local excise sales tax on the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a retail marijuana establishment operating within the town of Abington to anyone other than a marijuana establishment, at the rate of 3% of the total sales price received by the retail marijuana establishment, as consideration for the sale of marijuana or marijuana products, or take any other action relative thereto by the town manager. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 22. Is there anything to be heard in Article 22? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws of the town of Article 23, see if the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town of Abington by adopting a new chapter 127 entitled "Plastic Bag Ban" as follows or taking any action relative thereto. The text of the proposed bylaw is in your warrant on pages 16 and 17. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 23 as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 23 as presented in the warrant. Is there anything to be heard on this article? First, Mr. Frainey, I'd like to offer comments by the petitioner, the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Buckley, if you could hold one second, just, the selectmen just wanted to have their recommendation voiced.
Yes, the Board of Selectmen is recommending that this be passed over at this moment. And I can explain that further, as can the members of the board, should it become necessary.
Thank you, Mr. LaFawn. Mr. Buckley, who I believe is the lead proponent on this petition, I'd like to offer the floor to Mr. Jack Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On behalf of myself and the other petitioners on this article, we would like to thank the Finance Committee for their favorable recommendation for this legislation. It is a, almost a motherhood and apple pie issue. How can you be opposed to banning plastic bags, which are a pollutant that contribute to the detriment of the environment and across the Commonwealth that are now 115 communities, over 50% of the population, that have enacted a plastic bag ban? In the beginning of this town meeting cycle in February, there were just less than 100. We now have 115. The county of Plymouth, which has 26 towns, now has 11 towns, the latest two towns who joined the plastic ban brigade are the Halifax and Norwell voters. And if you look across the Commonwealth, every one of the 14 counties is represented within those 115 communities. And the communities are as different as Cambridge is different to Lowell, as Boston is different to Lunenburg, but all of the communities across the state. I recognize the issue and that the time has come, and it's long past come, to make a small, modest step to improving the environment here in Abington and across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There have been some communities that have tried to repeal the enactment of a plastic bag ban by law. None of them have been successful. The last one to try it was Tewksbury, and the motion to repeal the plastic bag lost 217 to 36. And if you think back, and some of you won't think back as far as I can think back, but in the 1960s, there were no plastic bags. You used paper bags. But now you have a situation where plastic bags are, without question, a detriment to the environment in this town and across the state. And, Mr. Moderator, I would hope that the bylaw is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Is there anything further to be said in Article 23? Mr. Frainey.
Just a couple of things. How does the Board of Health, do they have an opinion on this?
Moderator recognizes.
And just while you're coming down, Alex, you know, we hear about plastic bags. I tell you what, if we could get nips on here and got a nickel or a dime a piece, we could probably pay the town budget. So, and then most of those are plastic. So, in a way, yeah, the plastic bags are important, but you look at the containers they get with food to go, the styrofoam, the plastic, the tonnage is just out of sight. It has to be. So, plastic bags, yes, they're important, but I think we have some bigger issues, especially with things like, you know, nips and needles and stuff that are going on. So, anyways.
That'll have to be a separate warrant article for another day.
Next year.
Mr. Hagerty.
Alex Hagerty, 515 Summer Street. I am speaking on behalf of myself, not the board entirely, but the one thing that I will say about the board entirely is we have not made a decision yet on to whether or not to approve the plastic bag ban. We're very split right now on that vote. We've talked about it at several of our meetings, but speaking from a personal standpoint, I feel that the plastic bag ban should go into effect. As Mr. Buckley has said, and I say, and I thank you for putting this on the warrant, the plastic bags do have an extreme effect on our environment, and how much is landing up in landfills and the amount that is ending up in the oceans and affecting our wildlife. But the one thing that I do recommend that the town do approve of this, of this article, I was a big component, I'm a very big supporter, and I understand that a lot of people in town do not want plastic bags to be banned. So, in this article, there are alternatives to the plastic bags. There are biodegradable plastic bags that Boston uses, Bridgewater uses, Tewksbury uses, and it is in this article. So, I would recommend approval of this ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Moderator recognizes Mr. Ken Coyle.
I wasn't going to say anything because I spent half my life saying paper or plastic.
Mr. Coyle works for Trukies.
I actually didn't vote on the article. I did speak against it, not because I'm in love with plastic bags. There is a bill at the State House now that is being voted on any day now, I've heard, and that will go into effect on August 1st, okay? Be careful what you wish for because it's going to allow supermarkets to charge 10 cents for a paper bag, okay? But I would think that that bill will supersede any town bills. So, if the town wants to vote in favor of this, it could come as soon as August 1st that a new bill gets, you know, passed by the state and this will go down the tubes. So, I would maybe just recommend that, not a motion or anything, but just maybe recommend to hold off, just see what happens with the state one. That's all.
And just, as I understand this, if this passes tonight, this will not take effect immediately. It has to be submitted to the Attorney General and upon his approval or her approval, her approval, thank you, it would take six months after that approval. Ms. Plattie.
Kate Plattie, 45, Fox Drive. With all due respect, Mr. Coyle, doesn't that force change? So, if you have to pay for a bag, now plastic isn't...
Kate, direct it to me.
Sorry, could you ask Mr. Coyle if you had to pay for a bag?
Cute, but...
If you had to pay for a bag, then wouldn't you just bring your own rather than using plastic bags? And then I don't understand also why the Board of Health doesn't have an opinion on this yet because we can't recycle them because they jam the machines with the recycling.
That's what multi-member boards are all about, is their opinion. Is there anything else to be heard on this article? Mr. Buckley.
One last point, Mr. Moderator. In response to Mr. Coyle, I've watched the machinations of the General Court closely over a number of years, and I watched the legislation to ban handheld phones in automobiles. And it took a while, and I would suggest the plastic bag one would take a while. Whatever should pass before this has become effective, so much the better, but I would hope this bylaw is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. I'd like to recognize Mr. Sala.
I am, I was in the minority voting on this among the board. The majority of the board was in favor of this by a sufficient margin. Personally, I am, aside from the potential impact it would have on our commercial base in town, I'm not a fan in general of the governance of the town banning things. Today, it's bags. It could be something that you like more next time. I'm not a fan of that.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Mr. Coyle, to defend his honor.
No, I'm not defending my honor. Just to let everyone know, in the front of Trukies, every Trukies is a little bin you can put your, recycle your plastic bags.
Thank you. Public service.
And Lowe's has it too.
Anything more to be heard in Article 23? The motion on the floor is to approve Article 23. Anything else? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 3 as presented in the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Oof, you did it again. All right. We're going to go hands. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, please drop your hands. All those opposed, please raise your hands. The ayes have it. Article 23 passes. Article 24, see the town vote to revise chapter 49, Article 1, section 49-1 of our general bylaws by deleting the entirety of the existing text and replacing it with the following. This is called the permit to dump. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee defers to the recommendation of the Planning Board.
Mr. Sala defers to the recommendation of the Planning Board. This article is shown on pages 18 and 19. Moderator recognizes the chairman of the Planning Board, Mr. Wayne Smith.
The Planning Board recommends approval of this article as we believe the updated wording makes this section of our bylaws much more efficient and more effective than the present wording. We submitted this updated bylaw two years ago, but it did not make it on the warrant. Since then, we have asked town council to review the original draft and add language which would give the town a means of enforcing this bylaw, which the current bylaw lacks. The permit to dump is intended to prevent a property owner from filling a low area on their property to such an extent that it might change it or negatively affect drainage in the area and possibly cause a water problem on a budding property. The existing bylaw requires a property owner to notify neighbors and pay a public hearing, pay for a public hearing at the Planning Board to seek a permit to bring more than 100 yards of sand, gravel, loam, or the like on their property. We have found that this 100-yard threshold is far too low, and the bylaw does not take into account projects which have already been approved by the Planning Board as part of a previous public hearing for the same proposed project. Thus, this article would raise the threshold to require a permit if more than 250 yards of loam or fill are brought onto the property, and it would not require a second public hearing for the project if a site plan hearing or a definitive subdivision hearing had already taken place, since those hearings already require notice to your neighbors and a review of the topography and drainage design. If you wanted to spread six inches of loam over your backyard to improve the looks of your property, the current bylaw would prohibit you from acting unless you first scheduled a public hearing with the Planning Board. So, to raise the ground six inches to cover 20,000 square feet, it would take approximately 400 cubic yards of fill. We believe this is unnecessarily low threshold, and this bylaw could be used as a means for feuding neighbors to try to stop each other from improving their property or to voice an innocent neighbor, force an innocent neighbor to spend much more time and expense during the desired home improvement. We also propose to require notices, we also propose to require notices to be sent to all director abudders by first-class mail and to delete the requirements to mail a second notice by certified mail. Certified mail is unnecessarily, extra fee or tax, and nowadays, many people simply refuse to pick up their certified mail. This updated bylaw also requires that notices be sent to director abudders and to anyone living across the street. The people would be most directly impacted. The updated bylaw no longer would require notice to so-called abudders to abudders, who are residents who don't immediately abut the property where the fill is being proposed. Finally, the existing bylaw requires that a permit to dump must expire in one year with a provision that a property owner can request one three-month extension. For some larger projects or in some cases where a home project is delayed by financing or a change in family circumstances, there is no way for the Planning Board to further extend a permit. Instead, the resident must start all over on a brand-new public hearing must be held. We have proposed updated language which allows the Planning Board to issue the permit, which will expire two years from the date of issuance unless a shorter expiration is voted by the board. A valid permit may also extend for up to two additional years by a vote of the Planning Board under this new language. Note that we are not required to issue a permit for two years or to extend for two more years, but the board would now have the ability to decide how long the permit should last after hearing from the property owner and the neighbors about their specific project. The Planning Board would like to amend B, Applications, Item 3, by adding, as amended, by added, after fill area where the fill is being sourced from and the number of the trucks required to deliver the fill. For this reason, I make a motion to approve this article as amended, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, make a motion to approve Article 24 with the amendment to add language in section B3, where they would also require information where the fill is being sourced from and the number of trucks to be used to deliver the fill. Is there anything to be heard on this matter? Mr. LaFawn.
The Board of Selectmen has requested that town meeting pass over this. In a more detailed manner, the selectmen aren't necessarily opposed to it. However, they don't believe that there's been sufficient public discussion on this article. There's some substantive changes from what the Planning Board had, I don't want to say what they submitted, but when the article came before the Board of Selectmen, the issue at hand was that of adding an enforcement provision to the bylaw which didn't currently exist. These other substantive issues that may very well be in the town's best interest did not come before the Board of Selectmen for their discussion. Whether or not that happened at the Planning Board level is not clear based upon the agendas of their meetings over a period of time. So, just to summarize, if I may, the Board of Selectmen's position is that this may or may not be a good overall bylaw, but there ought to be more discussion by the public. Mr. Connelly, I would ask if that summarizes the boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaFawn. One second, Mr. Collins. Town council was just also noting there was, there had been previous discussion of also proposal to delete the phrase, the words "Planning Board" from section F. Is that what the Planning Board was, would you like to add that to your motion? Okay. Sorry, Mr. Collins. Go ahead.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street, also a member of the Abington Planning Board. I just wanted to get a clarification. So, the Board of Selectmen is saying that the article that they put on the town meeting warrant, they didn't know about? The language? I mean, this is the language that the Board of Selectmen put on the warrant?
No, this was an article submitted by the staff of the Planning Board. It was represented to me that the change was that of an enforcement provision. That was what was represented to the Board of Selectmen also. And again, I'm not suggesting anybody did anything that, you know, sneaky or anything like that, but it was very clear when it came to my office and forwarded to the Board of Selectmen that that was the substantive change. So, there was a communication breakdown, simple as that. I don't think it would be fair to suggest that the selectmen would be going through every single line and understanding what the Planning Board looks at all the time. That's why the recommendation would be that there be more public discussion on the substantive changes in this proposal before there be action by town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. LaFawn. Mr. Collins?
Just for clarification, the Planning Board has discussed this multiple times at meetings, publicly posted meetings. This is now, I think, the second or the third year we've been discussing this. We think that in order to make sure that we have teeth in this bylaw that currently exists and that residents have the ability to contact someone if neighbors are bringing in multiple trucks filled with dirt and dumping it on their lawn, that there's a way that we can enforce the statute. So, we'd like to move that there is a motion, that there is a vote taken tonight.
Mr. Collins, who is another member of the Planning Board, supports the motion to approve the article. One second, Mr. Collins, Mr. Noonan, and then Mr. Connelly.
Michael Noonan, 63 Melbury Drive. Just as a contractor's point of view, 250 yards of fill, loam, whatever, is not a lot. If you're going to do a front yard, just your lawn, tear it up, 5,000 square feet, four inches, you're going to need 62 yards. That's just a small lawn, and I think we should approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan. Anything else to be heard? Mr. Connelly, Tom Connelly.
Tom Connelly, 2 Indian Brook Road, Abington, Mass. To Mr. Collins through the moderator, you just made amendments to this article tonight, which we were not aware of. We're not opposed to those amendments, but because there are some other things that we have questions on, we'd rather that it, we pass over this so we can have more public hearings. And some of these that you wanted tonight didn't have a public hearing, except here at town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Connelly. Mr. Smith, and while he's approaching the microphone, I knew I would fail to do this. I wanted to recognize that our state representative, Allison Sullivan, has been here all night. She's standing up in the back right now. I apologize, Allison. I want to thank you for attending. I told her to give me a little Carol Burnett signal if I forgot to mention her. Thank you very much, Representative Sullivan, for being here. Mr. Smith.
Two years ago, or perhaps three, the Board of Selectmen asked us to take over this fill bylaw because they had had it and nothing was being done about it. They asked us to take it over. We did. We made the recommendations. We made the recommendations to them, which they had in plenty of time before the town meeting two years ago. Even though we gave them this, they refused to put it on the warrant. Let that sink in. The Planning Board made these recommendations, and the Board of Selectmen voted not to put it on the warrant. Now, we've come up with this as it is, and I would suggest that we pass it. In the meantime, if we don't pass it, we continue to do what we're doing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Frainy, and then Mr. Negreli.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move the question, please.
Mr. Negreli, would you like to speak? If you don't mind, Mr. Frainy, we'd like to hear Mr. Negreli.
Rich Negreli, 340 Diane Circle. Why is the Planning Board not videotaped? I mean, maybe this confusion would not happen if you could go back into the records of a video and be recorded in your meetings. Your meetings are not recorded, such as the zoning board meetings, the health board. Why is the Planning Board not being recorded? This would be a very easy situation. They could go back into the records and watch your meetings and figure out what you're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Negreli. The motion on the floor is from the Chairman of the Planning Board to approve Article 49 with an amendment to Section B 3 to add the phrase, if I have this correctly, to also require where the fill is being sourced from and the estimated number of truck trips to be used for delivery, and also in Section F to delete the two words "Planning Board." That is the motion on the floor. Anything else to be heard on this Article 24? If not, all those in favor of the Planning Board's motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Article 25. 25, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $30,000 for police department management and operations analysis or taking any action relative thereto by the town manager, Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 25 and to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 25. Is there anything to be heard in this article? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 25, please, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Okay. This is something that the police department has been asking for for a couple of years. We've lost a lot of policemen to other departments. We're training them. We don't have that many more senior officers on board anymore. My son was an officer. There's problems in the police department that need to be looked into by an independent agency, be it whoever's right, wrong, or indifferent. We need to be able to pull our police department back together and get some senior officers on our streets. We've got a lot, and there's nothing wrong with a rookie, but you need to have your senior officers out there too, and you need to be able to retain your force. Abington's not retaining their officers. There's a definite problem when the President of the Union, two years ago, asked for this, and we're still asking for it. My plea for you tonight is, let's get this small amount of money together. Let's take a look at why we're losing our officers, and let's try to retain our officers.
Thank you, ma'am. Just for the record, your name and address.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
1430 Bedford Street.
Thank you very much. Anything else to be heard in Article 25? Motion on the floor to approve Article 25. Am I okay to move forward? All those in favor of approving Article 25 as presented by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It's unanimous. Xavier, could you go back a few slides? I whipped right by your little thank you, my little thank you slide. Can you pull that up? I just want to take a minute to thank these people, our volunteers that are helping out taping this. Head custodian, our custodial staff. And Xavier Kearney, who is a graduate of Abington High School, is now back here helping us out with the technology. He's attending Worcester Poly Tech Institute, and thank you, thank you, thank you, Xavier, for running the show because most of us can't do what you're doing to help us out right now. Thank you. Okay, final article tonight, oh, I'm sorry, I needed to also, public service announcements. Abington's going to celebrate Flag Day and Founder's Day weekend with fireworks, the weekend of June 7th to June 9th. Friday is going to be a golf tournament, kickoff, cookout. The cookout will be at the United Church of Christ from 5:00 to 8:00. Saturday, there's going to be Silverwater Encampment at Island Grove, Senior Center Open House, a kids' fishing derby at 10:00 a.m. right across from the Town Barn and the police station, Anti-Bullying Street Hockey Clinic on the courts right outside police headquarters, Island Grove Guided History Tours, Diver Memorial Library, Open House in Center Ave, free kids' fun run and Founder's 5K race on Saturday evening, Island Grove Evening Events, a candlelight tour, and then the fireworks will be at Memorial Field. The gates will open at 5:00. Music will be sponsored by the Abington Summer Concerts Committee. There's going to be fireworks at 9:30 p.m. by Atlas Provision Entertainment. Want to thank that committee and also some other events on Sunday, the firefighters' memorial service, the church service, and music recital. There's a lot of information on the website. Please, the town anniversary is everywhere on June 10th, so they try to schedule all these great family events on that weekend. I hope you'll be there to celebrate our town of Abington. Also, one other notice, Monday, May 27th, at 10:00 a.m. will be the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony in our town of Abington. You're encouraged and invited to attend the parade and the ceremony. This year, they've made significant changes to the Memorial Day events to simplify it. The biggest and, of course, most important is 10:00 a.m. is the Memorial Day Parade to be followed by a cemetery inside the Mount Vernon Cemetery. If you'd like to see the parade, it'll assemble in front of the Brevo Brook Elementary School, come up Ralph Hammond Lane, it'll turn right onto Washington Street and go by the Frollo School, turn bare right onto Adams Street, then to Pearl Street, and then to the cemetery. Everyone will proceed into the Veterans Lot in the Grand Army of the Republic mound for a service in there. We will not be holding ceremonies this year at Laidle Field or West Abington Cemetery or at the Fitz Memorial or at the Island Grove Bridge. Everything will be part of the parade and the ceremony in the cemetery. So, I hope you'll be there to support the Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 27th at 10:00 a.m. and also for the big weekend, that first week, that weekend in June, June 7th through the 9th. Sorry for the delay in bringing that up earlier, but I promised Jan Prowl, summer concerts are starting. Sorry, Jan, she's waving at me. Nancy Reed, summer concerts at the Nisbitt Bandstand start on Sunday, June 30th. They're awesome. They're free to the public. They have different music every week. We invite you all to be there. It's like Norman Rockwell. It's awesome. Anything else? What's?
Article 26.
That's right. Article 26, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $5,000 for the purpose of supplementing public safety coordination for the 2020 St. Patrick's Day Parade or any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala.
In a last-minute change, the Finance Committee moves to approve Article 26 and to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 26 and raise and appropriate the $5,000. Is there anything to be heard on this article? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Jack Bailey, it's unanimous. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending and taking part in your town government. I'd like to call the annual town meeting adjourned as of 9:39 p.m. Thank you again very much.